Call the meeting to order at 6:45 PM as this is an organizational meeting. I am standing in until the new president of the Cedar Springs Board of Education is duly elected during this meeting. So the first thing that we will do is go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the administration of our oath of office. The administration of the oath of office is for all of the board members to renew their oath. And tonight's oath of office will be administered by none other than Deputy Tom McCutcheon of the Kent County Sheriff's Department, who also serves as our school resource officer at Cedar Springs High School. So Deputy McCutcheon, I will turn the focus of the meeting over to you. Thank you.
All righty. Well, can we all raise our right hand? We don't have to stand up. Just raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the office of member of the Board of Education for Cedar Springs Public Schools, Kent County and Newago Counties in accordance with Michigan to the best of my ability. Right? I do is all I need.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Very good. Thank you Deputy McCutcheon and congratulations to the seven members of our Board of Education. The next step that we will take in our meeting is for me to appoint Tracy Slager as our temporary secretary until such time as the new secretary of the Board of Education has been elected. So at this time, enter on the secretary or temporary secretary Slager, would you please take rule call?
Yes, I will. Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of officers. Back in December, each member of the Board of Education was provided with an outline, an explanation of each of the different positions as a part of the Executive Council on the Board of Education. Each member has had an opportunity to review those positions. And so at this time, we'll start by taking nominations for the position of president.
I would nominate Heidi Reed as president of the Cedar Springs School Board.
I agree.
So we have a nomination for Heidi Reed by trustee Revard, seconded by trustee Bowser. Any discussion?
None.
None heard? Any other nominations for the Office of President of the Cedar Springs Public Schools Board of Education? None being heard? I'll call for a vote. So all of those board members in favor of Heidi Reed serving as the president of the Cedar Springs Public Schools Board of Education during the 2021-2022 school year, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations, President Reed, and I will turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you. We will continue on with opening up the floor for a nomination for vice president. Do we have a nomination? We have a motion for Matt Schaffner. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Tracy for Matt Schaffner for vice president. Is there any discussion? Having none, will everyone in favor of Matt Schaffner for vice president signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Having none, Matt, welcome to the vice presidency ship again. Thank you. We'll move on to the secretary position and I'll open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Tracy.
I will nominate Tracy Slager.
We have a nomination for Tracy for secretary. Do we have a second? I think that went to Shannon. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding Tracy as the secretary for the board? Hearing no discussion, everyone in favor of Tracy for secretary, please say aye.
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 Aye. You can also indicate by raising your hand, I guess, where is a visual taping thing. There you go. Okay, thumbs up. Okay, thank you Tracy for accepting the nomination for secretary. We'll move on to the Office of Treasurer. I'll open the floor for nomination for the treasurer position.
I will nominate Trent Gilmore for treasurer.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Jeff Revard, seconded by Misty Bowser for Trent Gilmore as treasurer. Is there any discussion? Having none, all those in favor of Trent serving as treasurer for the next coming year, please signal by saying aye and thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you Trent for accepting that. And thank you everybody for being on the board, even though we have on positions, I do value everyone's service and looking forward to working together for this coming year. So we'll move on for the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Support.
We have motion by Tracy, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? And we'll stay with our same motion format. We're moving right along here. All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, signal by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Having none? The adoption, the agenda is adopted. So that brings us to gratitudes. I'll open the floor to share gratitude.
I think I'll just state the obvious. I think we're all grateful that we returned to in-person learning. So it's wonderful to just drop off the kids this morning and just see them say hi to their friends and their teachers and just lots of excitement in the air. So just really, really pleased with how smooth things seem to go. So thank you, teachers and administration and staff.
For sure.
I will definitely echo that. With it being kind of the first day back, there were a lot of anxieties in our household and a lot of cranky kids from getting up a couple hours early. So very grateful for the patience of the staff and just administration really to to get our kids there, to get them learning and they need it. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you for the cool gift we got.
Yeah.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Yes. I took mine back. Mine tried to disappear and I stole it back.
I'm waiting for mine to disappear. Yes, thank you very much. My gratitude would be also just, I'm so glad we're back to in-person learning. It's really, really, it's, I think it's good for everybody. So I appreciate all the hard work and with all the opposition we had lately. So I really appreciate that we're doing what's best for the kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, January is Board Appreciation Month and so, you know, each of you received a small token of appreciation on behalf of the district, both in kind and in spirit. You know, the mug is something to be used to either keep you cool and refreshed during those tense moments or hot moments in the summer. It's also intended to keep you warm and cozy during those cold moments during the winter months. But we also included an opportunity for you to just be mindful of the delicate nature of leadership and how it is important to embrace multiple characteristics when you as board members go about the challenging tasks of being leaders in our community. You know, we all know that leadership is a challenging thing and not everyone can do it. But the representation, the model of the Karen really is a good illustration of of what's important to be successful as a leader. To be successful as a leader, you need patience, you need balance. You need a little bit of friction, which is always good. And you also need that that ability to rethink and be creative in your approaches to solving problems. If a Karen, if a stack of stones falls over, it's not the end of the, it's not the end of the game. Our game is an infinite game. We go on and on and on. It's an opportunity for you to reexamine those resources at your disposal and to build a taller tower. And so really those, those four key characteristics, creativity, patience, balance and really leaning into the friction, because those are the things that make us stronger. And so we hope you just really know how much that you are appreciated by the team here in Cedar Springs, by the staff and the students and families and just how much the efforts that you put forth on a regular basis throughout the year. Do not go unnoticed. They are critical to the success of this district. Then we thank you for that.
Thank you. That was very thoughtful, very much appreciated.
Thank you, Scott.
You're very welcome.
Okay, we'll move on with our agenda and we have with us our high school representatives. We have Cecilia and Julia Smith and they're going to give us the high school update. And how was today?
It was good. It felt good to be back at actual school, not sitting on my couch. Yes, and I think a lot of people were very happy to be back. The teachers seemed excited. You guys and them obviously put in a lot of hard work to make it happen. So thank you for that. So our report, I don't know, Julia, you want to start?
Um, yeah, so we haven't done, since we've been virtual, we haven't done, we haven't had any like spirit days or anything really like in this school. Um, so there hasn't been that much going on, I guess.
Yep, with our, we did a video, a Christmas video for the teachers, just thanking them for everything and wishing them happy holidays. I'm not sure if you guys saw that video. Um, and we got a lot of positive responses from that. So I'm glad that they enjoyed that. And then we are planning on having a meeting next week just to get us back in the role of things used to having meetings every other week. And then we are looking to possibly have some spirit days just to get people motivated that they're back in school.
Okay.
Any questions?
That's a good idea about the motivation. Good thinking. Okay, all right. Thank you for joining us. You're welcome to stay or whatever you, whichever way you'd like to go.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the organization of the Board of Education. And first up, we have item A, the regular meeting schedule from July 2021 until June 2022. Anyone have any issues or questions on that? Okay. We'll move on to designation of person to post the meeting notice. And that would be Amy McCarthy. Okay, official depositories of the bank, item C for school funds. They're listed on our attachment, Independent Bank, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, Huntington Bank, Bank of New York, Mellon and US Bank. I believe those are all the same as last year, majorly. Any questions on that? And the signature card authorizations will stay the same, and that's a benefit of not switching officers. They do get to stay the same. So that's, that's positive right there. District attorneys for 2021, Trune Law and Clark Hill Law Firm. District Financial Auditor for 2021 is Ray DeVeldt and Hafner, same. So that's good for Chris, not having to redo the different system. And then we have an appointment of our recording secretary for 2021 and we are appointing Amy and/or Chris, however, that should fall with the schedule. Is there any questions on any of those items? Okay, we have those on the agenda later for action. So we'll move on to the consent agenda before us and for those items, I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Support.
We have a motion by Matt and a second by Tracy to accept the consent items as presented. So I will stick with the same protocol as there, these aren't real different items. Everyone in favor of the consent items, raise your hand and signal aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? And the consent items are approved as presented. That brings us to discussion. And we have our financial update with Chris Lahey.
All right, thank you. So our financial update this evening is much quicker than usual because we have our budget amendment presentation directly following. So in your board book, you have the year-to-date budget update as usual, and I just wanted to include a quick update on the mechanical purchases that we brought to the board in the December 14th board meeting. We have the bid opening and deadline scheduled for tomorrow, actually, January 12th, 2021 at 9:00 AM. So Scott Jurnberg from Triangle will be coming to district office and we will be reading those results live via Zoom. And then we will have results and recommendations that we'll provide to the board during the January 25th meeting. So a slight change in the schedule there. I believe in December, we said we'd have it ready for this meeting. But due to some schedule constraints from Triangle, we had to just push it slightly. So that's my financial update. If I can just go right into our presentation for the for the budget amendment. All right, let me go ahead and get this moving. So all right, so um, this again, this is our, this is our mid-year budget amendment for the general fund. If you recall, when we, when we first started this school year, from budget standpoint, really from any standpoint, there was a great deal of uncertainty. So if you've had the chance to look at this so far, you've seen some significant changes and I'm going to explain those changes. I'm going to blow right through this as quickly as I can and then just open up for questions at the end. So obviously enrollment is a major component of our, of our funding. So up in the top left of this slide, you can see where we projected. We projected this year to have 3604 student count and you can see all the past years there as well. Our actual enrollment is the top right. You can see quite a drastic drop to 3396. Okay, and those were actually counted students via in-person and virtual as of our count day in October. And I'll speak more about how this was across the district. It's not just a Cedar Springs issue later in this presentation. You'll recall, I spoke at length during previous board meetings about the super blend. And you can see here in the bottom graph, the green bars with the super blend, what our enrollment was counted at. So it really helped bring us up during this time of uncertainty to count as if we had 3,537 students, which was just down 40 from last year versus the 181 we were down from last year without that super blend, the actual count. Now, this is just a foundation allowance history. This obviously is another key component of our funding. And so here on this, I just wanted to show on this graph that when I brought you the budgets in June, indications were that we were going to take a budget, or I'm sorry, a foundation allowance per pupil decrease. And so that's where I budgeted at a $550 decrease for both 1920 and this year, 2021. Because at the time, the Department of Treasury was advocating as such. And we actually did take a decrease in last year, but not this year. So we'll talk about that here in a minute. In all actuality, the foundation allowance stayed the same at 8,111 for both 1920 and 2021. And that can be confusing. They didn't cut the foundation allowance, they being the state of Michigan, but they did, they did take away an amount per pupil, but it wasn't from the foundation allowance, kind of a technicality there. So that's a little bit of history. This slide kind of shows and sums this up a little bit. So that sums up the first slide with the, with the bar graphs, where our projection was, where our actual fall enrollment was, and then super blend. And then this just explains the foundation allowance. Okay, we projected 550 decrease. It actually stayed the same. But we did receive a $65 per pupil increase this year and a $175 per pupil reduction, not off the foundation allowance, but just a reduction that we didn't know about until August of 2020 that came off last year. So, you know, I budgeted quite a bit down based on the numbers from Treasury, but it ended up being a good thing. I do have some colleagues in other districts that did not budget in 1920, did not budget for reduction. And their auditors still issued them a finding on their financial reports, even though it was completely out of their hands. So aired on the side of caution and I'm really pretty happy that we did. So a little bit about the super blend here. It really helped us out combined with the $65 per pupil increase, even though we counted 181 students less this fall than, than in fall of 2019. We only received $124,000 less in funding on the foundation-based level, which was very nice. So in all, the super blend allowed us to receive over a million dollars more than we otherwise would have. So I'm going to go through the revenues real quick and then I'll go through the expenses. So first, local, state, federal, and then incoming transfers, which are a smaller part of the budget. You can see the dollar changes here and then the percent changes. And rather than focus on this, this chart here, I'm just going to go through each one, local, state, federal, and then our transfers. So on a local level, we had a net increase. Again, this is from our budgeted allocation in June. The net increase, and I'm going to go through each thing, this is the theme of this presentation, is here's our net increase or decrease and then what has changed? So from a local perspective, property tax revenue, I was conservative with the uncertainty of COVID-19. We're actually receiving $157,000 more in property tax revenue than, than the budget indicated. And then this is a bit inflated because we, if you recall, our storm in late August, we have to book that insurance reimbursement that paid for our gym roof and the new gym floor. We have to book that as revenue. There's offsetting expense on the other side. So really our local revenues didn't change much. But if you add up the 157 and 499, again, I kept small little changes out, so it's not going to tie up perfectly. Those add up to more than the $484,000 increase. But then you see all these decreases are really the result of COVID-19 and not having things open. So from a state level, again, major change here because I budgeted down $550 per student and our foundation allowance was able to stay the same. So you see over $1.5 million difference increase there in foundation allowance alone versus the budget. And then we received some MIPSers as the Michigan Public Schools Retirement System, Employees Retirement System. So those things fluctuate from year to year. There's some increases there. We had some grants that we were told we probably wouldn't be getting this year, the Early Literacy Coaches Grant, some additional instructional time. Things are better than we thought they would be, so we received some, some grant money there. So those are some increases. Decreases, Special Ed Transportation, obviously with less transportation last year. That's a year in arrears there where we get that revenue offset. So there's a decrease there. And then $100,000 less in at-risk revenue. That's a little misleading because our revenues have to match our expenses. We didn't receive less revenue for at-risk students. We're just budgeting less of it and that's because of the nature of this year. We're able to offer these online classes and we're using COVID relief funding for those and not using the at-risk funding as we would necessarily during a normal year. So our, our at-risk allocation is over a million dollars. That's how much we have. It's a pretty small variation, but that's why there's a little bit less there. From a federal revenue level, this is something that we'll talk about towards the end. Obviously, in June, I had no idea how much COVID-related Federal CARES Act funding that we would be receiving this year. And that's to the tune of another $1.5 million that we're going to receive in fiscal year 2021. So that's the lion's share of this. There's a little bit more that we're using in title grants and a little offset there with our IDEA, which is our Individuals with Educational Disabilities Act. So slight variations there. And then finally, transfer in, transfer outs. These are some small changes here, slight decrease of $62,000. So in the scheme of things, not a large change there. The obligatory pie charts for you, you can just have our original budget and then our amended budget to see that roughly everything is about the same. The federal, the federal pie piece really increased as a result of COVID funding. Everything else stayed relatively the same. Most of our funding is still coming from the state of Michigan. So that's the revenue side. Going through expense, obviously there's some major fluctuations here. So if we look at this in aggregate, our original budget was for 38, almost $39 million in total expenses. And I'm bringing an amendment to you with just over $41,000 in expenses. So typically, when revenues go up, expenses go up, there's, there have been a lot of new expenses this year. And now we'll go through those and talk about everything that's changed since the budget. So each thing that we go through, and these are the different parts of our expenses, you can see the pie chart on the side. I've illuminated the part of the pie that it is in red and the others are grayed out. So the biggest part is our basic programs. Those are the things at the school level and we've net increased that by $1.2 million. Teacher salaries and benefits, we've added teachers, especially with the online component and making sure that class sizes were appropriate. Added $86,000 in substitute teachers and really that's the result of having our daily subs that we are doing and paying a much higher rate than previous years to ensure that we can think, keep things going. 31, I'm sorry, $371,000 in the software licenses and things for our online Red Hawk Online learners and some other changes here. There was $240,000 in curriculum, Spanish Science and then Math and Focus that were approved. And then decreases in workshops and conferences, a small decrease, but obviously people can't go to them like they could in previous years. It's worth noting that a lot of this increase are very, probably most of it is covered by those CARES Act funds. So they, they allowed us to use that and we've, we've been able to put it to good use. And that's where you want to see things used, is at the basic program levels impacting education for our students. Added needs, these are things where internet devices, Canvas, those, those kind of secondary level type expenses. We've been able to provide at-home internet for students. We had 300 hotspots. I don't know how it happened. I have zero hotspots in my office. Exactly 300 are out in the community and I have zero people asking for hotspots right now. So that's sun, moon, stars aligning. I don't know, but it's working. So anyhow, the devices for teachers are in here. Some, some Chromebook expense and then obviously things such as Canvas that we're using. And then slight decreases, I already spoke about 31A. That's just kind of an Um and then slight decreases, I already spoke about thirty one A, that's just kind of an. Uh an allocation change there. So. And then Title Four is a grant funding twenty one thousand dollars. We're still spending our Title Four allocation, which is about twenty four thousand dollars this year. We're just moving it to a different area. Um pupil support, net increase of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars here. That's really. Our Spectrum Health Aids. So Scott or somebody in district office had a great idea in late summer of uh of bringing Spectrum Health Aids. Onboard and having one in each in each building, and so that's really the only change in pupil support that's worth noting. Uh instructional staff services, an increase of seventy thousand dollars. I've outlined that here. Um that's I ready. Uh was something that was not budgeted for. We weren't sure we, well, going through the budget, I wasn't sure it was gonna look like, and so. That was something that we added here. And then there's a sixty five thousand dollar reduction. Uh in staffing, it's not a real reduction. Again, it's just me reallocating someone to a different area of the budget that's more appropriate. Given their current work. So no big changes there. General administration, you can see how small the piece of the pie that is. That's really Scott and uh the Board of Education. So. Not a, not a large uh piece of the budget. Again, just a net decrease of eighty eight thousand. Um and that's the resignation of a staff member. Um that has been replaced, but again. The nature of the work has been replaced, so that's coded elsewhere. You'll see as an increase here in just a moment. So. And then a slight reduction in conferences, travel, things that would happen in a non-COVID year. School administration, net decrease of twenty thousand dollars here. Uh we had an increase in Red Hawk online administrators, but a decrease in overall cost of uh Cedar Trails administration. And that's just uh in a person, you know, personnel change, and then the cost of that personnel benefits and wages being a slight variation there. So. Business services, I hate to see it, but there's an increase here of fifty thousand dollars. This is one of those cases where. I have somebody that's kind of working in the capacity. If you recall us bringing um AP back in house, and we did. We did shed some expense, obviously, to Kent ISD, but there was. Staff members that were coded to other places that are really more appropriate to be coded to function two fifty two, which is business services. So that's really that, as well as slight changes in employees insurance. So we're kind of a small piece of the puzzle, and you see that. Uh when someone elects to take insurance, it makes a, makes a slight difference. Operations and maintenance, netting increase of five hundred and sixty eight thousand. I really did budget for the COVID PPE. Most of this uh is um for high school gym repairs related to that storm. So you remember that increase in revenue? We've got the increase in expense here. Um I I held a lot of things. There could be some variation here between now and our final budget, because there's just so much uncertainty. With not knowing when kids would be coming back to school, I did the most of this work in December. Um and it seems a little clearer now, but we'll see. So uh that's the increase in ops and maintenance. Transportation, slight net de- decrease, and really, that's again, me being conservative, not, oops, not knowing what the rest of the year would hold. But we've already saved a little bit of money from transportation, just from having some weeks where students weren't coming into the buildings. So uh and fuel. Almost through our expenses here. Support Services Central, there's a net increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from budget. Well, we added a communication specialist, so there's a, there's a net increase there. And then, of course, the district-wide phone system was not something that I included in the original budget. Um but we did decrease some of the overall technology purchase expenses because of all the new technology we've purchased. And coded to different areas, we were able to reduce that a little bit. So um overall net increase, but that worked against it. So if you take all of those pieces of the pies that were illuminated as we went around, it makes this pie chart uh that shows where all of our dollars are going. Obviously, uh basic programs, that's almost fifty percent of the budget, and that's where you want it, because that's where the students are. So as we go around. That's, that's how the pie chart uh looks, and it really looks the same as most previous years. Excuse me. And then I have to, I'm obligated to, just in my own mind, show you guys how it breaks down. By the type of expense. So salaries, benefits, purchase services. And I think this is best shown by a pie chart. So I put the, whoops. I put the original budget on the left and the amended budget on the right, although I'm seeing that my label does not come up here. Uh you can actually see that salaries and benefits, if you look to our new budget, make up seventy percent of our budget. And that is really a healthy, healthy thing for a budget. Uh when school districts get up around eighty percent, seventy five to eighty percent. Um. That's where it gets a little bit um dicey, uh because those are fixed costs, those are people costs. So. It's a lot more difficult if you need to, to cut people costs. And so we're in a really good shape as far as, as those things go. Obviously, the influx of purchases from. Technology to PPE, things we wouldn't do in a normal year, is kind of skewed that a little bit. But uh. Really good to see where everything is shaping up here, and I'm not sure why my other sections didn't come through, but. It's okay, we can move past it. This is my wooden, one-page budget sheet. You'll see this as a PDF uh in Board Book. And it just shows where we ended last year, where the original budget is for this year, and now the amendment. And now I'll start working on the new amendment that'll go right next to it. So. This lays things out. You can see on here, I'll talk about in a minute, um where our fund balance ended on June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Where the original budget had everything landing. Again, the five hundred and fifty dollar per pupil and lack of awareness of COVID nineteen funds coming in. Kinda had things quite a bit off, and then where we're projecting to be now. So if you take everything together. Our fund balance on June thirtieth, twenty twenty of nine million, uh we're adding two hundred and ten thousand. So this is my projection right now, taking everything together and stacking up the revenues and expenses. This budget I'm presenting to you tonight uh has us adding two hundred and ten thousand dollars to fund balance. At the end of this fiscal year, if everything goes as planned, which if we learned anything in the last year, it likely won't. Our fund balance history, um. I threw in a little graduation picture here because it's, you know, it's reason for celebrating, but you can see our fund balance history. The district is in great financial um. Shape, uh great financial health. You'll notice that if this holds true, our fund balance will actually decrease uh for this year, even though. I'm saying that we're going to add two hundred thousand dollars to it, and that's because uh it's reported as a percent of expenditures. So. Even though our fund balance will be higher, our expenditures are higher this year, so that that makes that look a little bit lower, which is a little wonky. So that's the Cedar Springs budget. Um and I wanted to give you guys, I always like to during the January. Uh amendment, kinda give you a look at how we compare to other districts. So I'll try to move through this, it's only four slides, just to, you know, how. Chris, twenty three percent, that seems like quite a fun balance. How does that compare to other districts? So, um. This gives you two looks here, uh and and this is, the first one here on the top gives you a dollar change, okay? Of all the districts in Kent County. Uh twenty-two districts, who added the most to their fund balance during last year? And the answer is Cedar Springs. We did add the most to fund balance. Um from last year to this, or I'm sorry, from from twenty nine, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So that one point seven million that we added last year. Um from a percent standpoint, uh we are still close to the top. Um for what it's worth, um that's, that's where we came in there and fund balance changed. Ten-year history of fund balance, the only, the real reason I included this is just to show in aggregate for all the Kent County districts, what's the average fund balance? Uh for twenty twenty, all the school districts in aggregate have a fund balance of twelve point three percent. Um again, so we are, we're quite a bit higher than than the aggregate, but that pulls in the highs and the lows. Um so that's a little bit about fund balance, really quick, just to give you guys a snapshot of that. Um and but then the question, I think it's been asked to me in previous board meetings. Okay, so we've lost quite a bit of students this year. How does that compare to other districts around the county? Well, if you look at this in the far uh column here, this is the twenty twenty. Um twenty twenty-one versus twenty nineteen, twenty twenty student change. Only Byron Center actually added students. From last year to this. Every other district, Sparta was very close to breaking even. Every other district has lost students. So you can see, we're right here at a hundred and ninety-eight students lower than our fall count of twenty nineteen. Um but our neighbors, Rockford, two hundred and sixteen down, Law has lost two oh four. So it's not uncommon to be losing students. Um I do, I do know of of our one hundred and ninety-eight, ninety-four of those families told us that they were choosing to homeschool. Um ten decided not to attend preschool or kindergarten this year, and we're just going to go to next year. So. Um the belief in the county is that we will hopefully, and indications will are that we will receive a lot of those students back. Um and so I'm very hopeful and optimistic that that will be the case. But just to give you an idea that we're not alone in that loss. And I think the state of Michigan knew that, and that's why they did the super blend with the funding. And here is the super blend. So what kind of impact, as I said earlier, it really helped us to the tune. And again, these were numbers that were provided uh by Kent County, so they might be slightly different. Um but the state im- state aid impact for for Cedar Springs was just over a million dollars uh for the super blend. Versus if we hadn't had the super blend, you can see on here that other districts really took advantage of that as well. So it it helped out. For the state, or I'm sorry, for the county as a whole, of over seventeen million dollars more than than these districts would have had. So looking forward to twenty twenty one, uh when I, when I really put this presentation together, it was still twenty twenty. Um so as you know, uh you're not going to approve this budget tonight. We'd be asked to adopt this with a resolution on the January twenty-fifth board meeting, but there's a lot going on uh even since. December, uh the January twenty-one consensus revenue estimating conference is this Friday. It's going to provide some new insight. Into what the new year will bring. Um and I won't read through these bullet points, but but you certainly can in your spare time. Uh we have continuously really exceeded expectations of economists and the crack from. In August uh about how the school aid fund and the really the general fund is doing. So. It's pretty remarkable to see that uh there really doesn't appear to be, as of right now, on January eleventh, twenty twenty one. Any reason to fret and think that we are going to have a reduction in in funding uh for for next school year, or definitely for this school year. And then this was late-breaking news, right when I was finishing this up, right before Christmas. Um. Uh the federal government uh released news of a nine hundred billion dollar COVID nineteen relief bill, and actually, I made this next slide about that. And this is the last slide, I promise. Um it allocated fifty four billion dollars to K twelve schools. One point six billion dollars to Michigan schools, and that's just K twelve, that doesn't include higher ed. That's four times um the initial Cares Act that brought us two point, or I'm sorry, two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. So for us, it will look like one point one million dollars more uh in funding in COVID relief. Uh funding. The deadline to spend those funds won't be until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So my plan is to make sure. Our current allocate allocation, excuse me, of COVID relief funds will be spent by June thirtieth of this year. Um and then that'll give us next fiscal year to spend this new bucket of COVID relief funds. So. A lot to keep track of on the budget side and all these different grant funds, but a lot of new information continuously coming out as well. So that's what I have. I'll take any questions that you may have. Um I apologize for not being briefer, but a lot of information there.
Questions?
Chris, I had a quick question.
Tracy, you're up.
Okay, um kinda going way back to the beginning of your presentation, but then you touched on it at the end, and that's just with the foundation allowance. With the super blend for twenty twenty, um I just noticed in one of your charts. There was thirty-five, thirty-seven, and then it was thirty-five, twenty-six. And then in the comparison chart with all the schools, I think it was thirty-five, twenty-two. Um I just. Wondered why the variance in calculations on that.
Yeah, yeah. So the the number that the um, that that Kent County uses is, I'm not sure where they pull their data. So on those, on the slides later in the, in the uh. In the presentation here, those numbers may be slightly off. They're using different state aid, you know, status reports to pull those numbers. Um the ones that I had, I can look back on it, Tracy, and I can get you a a a concrete number there. But uh there's, there's audits of those numbers from from the fall count, so. It's very possible that I pulled one from from immediately after a fall count, and then I pulled one off our latest. State aid status report and it had changed just slightly. So I can look at that and I'd be happy to to send you an email with where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, Chris, there's a reference to using all the current COVID money by June of twenty twenty one. If I recall, the original date to use that by was December of twenty, and we used, uh we, the board, I think. Approved to purchase uh to to use that money for teachers' computers. Is that correct?
So I'm really glad that you brought that up. I kinda, I kinda breezed over that here in the last slide. So um. Uh I'll answer that first, then we'll talk about those computers. But the deadline for expenditures related to that first round, as this came out right after Christmas. Um was originally December thirty-first of twenty twenty. As part of that bill, they came out and they said, we're gonna extend it to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. So they gave us some relief. They waited till the eleventh hour. But now that really helps us out because uh we have the rest of this fiscal year and then some. Um if we need it, to spend those dollars. Um we approved, or the board approved. Um I think what you're thinking of, Jeff, is is the purchase of the eight hundred student Chromebooks that I brought to you. Uh it was either September or October. And said, I don't know if we can have them in time for December thirty-first due to the supply chain issues, but as long as we have them ordered before. Will be okay. Uh we did not receive them in time. Uh indications are, we'll receive them in February. But because of this deadline extension, it will, it won't be an issue anyways. So, you know, obviously, we wanna spend those dollars uh. With as much fiduciary responsibility as possible, but as it were, I think we have more than enough expenditures this year. Between substitute teachers, the hotspots, the devices we have purchased, et cetera, et cetera. I could go on. To code um enough of our expenditures for this year to get all those those dollars, you know, especially because I was planning on having everything. Spent by December thirty-first, um to get them spent by the end of this fiscal year and kinda cleaned up and. Tied up, and that'll, that'll allow me to keep that bucket clean, to use the next allocation of Cares Act funds in next fiscal year. So that's, that's my plan, but we have some, we have some leniency now in the, in the uh legislation if we need it. So the, the, the teacher devices we did purchase, um the board approved that purchase back uh in the summer. Those were received, the teachers um, you know, have had them for this whole school year. We actually got them out to them. I believe during the PD week uh in early September. So they've, they've been working with those. And we used a couple different buckets of funding to pay for those in this first round of COVID relief. So. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I I'm still a little curious about the, so it was Chromebooks. We, we agreed, uh we, we voted on and agreed to purchase, and. I was under the impression that that was the, uh we were doing it at that time. It was the end of the time period that we could spend that money. So I guess the, the real question is. Do we have money left over from the first COVID act, or does it all now run together? Uh and become uh usable through twenty twenty-two? How does, uh how do those dollars separate and work out?
Yeah, so it's, it's funny, because we. There's some, I put in here, uh you know, we've received one point five million dollars. There's about six different buckets. Of COVID funds that make up that one point five million dollars. And when I say that, I mean, um there were these ESER funds, they call them. Um that had to be drawn down from the state of Michigan. So I had to fill out a, Jen Haberlin and I um worked together. In the grant system with the state, and it had to be approved, and then I have to draw down our purchases based on if they met what was approved. Um and then some of them, the lion's share of it, really, one point two million dollars, they, we received three hundred and fifty dollar per pupil, and then another bucket. Um in August, that just came to us in our state aid payment. And so there's no, there's no drawdown of that. So. I'm keeping them all coded separately. All the expenditures are coded so that our revenue matches our expenses. Um because this will all be part of our, excuse me, our federal single audit during the um, during this coming summer. Um so it definitely won't flow together, uh but we have, we just have more time to spend these funds. They're not all spent up. Um but we'll be able to to use them. In a way that that uh is more concrete. So for example, I was planning to. Um take our new teachers uh this year that we hired, there were a few teachers that we hired to do our Red Hawk online. That's an allowable expense. For for the COVID relief funds. Um I may not use, I was only planning on um. Using COVID relief funds on them from September through December, because I was told that was all that was allowable. Now. Now I can use COVID relief funds to pay for their salary and benefits through the whole year. So that's, that's just kind of a way, it's really the shell game, right? So I'm, I'll, that's an easier and cleaner way to use those dollars rather than using the general fund for the second half of the year. So to that point, I hope that answers the question. We will use up this whole first bucket. By June 30th, and my plan is not to, not to use this new allocation that's supposedly coming. Until the next fiscal year.
One, one more final question.
Sure.
It's not many dollars, but the early middle college increase, is that simply due to student count involved with early middle college?
Yeah, that's funny that you ask that. I'm glad you asked that because when that came through, I had a conversation with Mr. Baronwald about that, just to check in and, and see that. And he said that was part of the plan. All along, and that's just the progression of their program. And that still there are more students in it than there have been in previous years. And he was very happy to see it because that means that. COVID didn't really impact it. Those students that were planning to be in that program and were on track, were continuing. And so. It was a good thing, but yep, I had the exact same question about that, especially being, you know, my first year in the district. So. Yeah.
Chris, I just want to thank you for the, you know, the time you put in on this. Very informative, very thorough, very clean and clear. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. I appreciate that.
So when you go to the conference, I'm sure you'll all be talking about the super blend and how long that might be with us. Because my concern is going to be with the students that we lost. My curiosity is, are, are they coming back or have they chosen other lifestyles with homeschooling? So I'm just curious what the word on the street is going to be.
That's a great question. There is talk. I know in the legislature that they will continue some form of the super blend for next year. I know it's actually, it's been discussed already. I don't know, you know, where they are in those discussions, but I'll definitely keep you informed as we hear more. And to the point of, of whether or not those families and those children are planning on coming back. Actually, part of our huddle discussion the last couple of weeks is to reach out to those families and, and ask them. So. We know we have a great record in Power School of, of who was here and, and, you know, where they went and their contact information. So we'll actually be working with. Chrissy here in the board office is going to get me a great list of contacts, and then we're going to work with building secretaries to reach out. So that we can begin to plan and get a good idea, not only fiscally, but just from a, from a class size and, and scheduling standpoint. You know, if those students will be coming back to us for next year. So we'll keep you posted on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions from the board?
Oh, Chris, I appreciate the, the look at the fund balance for the district, but also as compared to the rest of Kent County. And I think as we think about the impact of COVID and the changes that we see with student numbers. I think you could compare that to 2007. If people knew the economy was going to crash in 2008. They would wanted, you know, more in a fund balance to be able to float some of those challenges. And I think we're in a great financial situation. For some of these fiscal bumpy road that we may, as a result of COVID and other things. So a nice job painting that picture and I appreciate sharing that.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. And if, if anybody ever has any questions of, and wants to see more numbers or, or graphs, or just has questions. And needs more detail, you know, feel free to call me or email me. This is the stuff that I love to do. So I'd be happy to discuss it or just send you information over. But. To that point, I fully agree. You know, we are, we are in a great spot financially so that we can weather really any storm right now. And it's, and I. To that point, we've, we've not gone without, you know, we've done a, we've done a very good job here with the district leadership team of buying new curriculum and getting technology. And, and making the purchases that we need. So, yeah, I think we're in a good spot. And I've only been here a short time, so this is all your work. So thank you all for your leadership to make this happen. It's, I'm just telling you about it.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Chris. Okay, we will move on to the bond construction planning update with Chris, Ken and Scott.
So a lot of work has been going into. Meeting with members of the team from GMB and also Triangle Construction. Ken has been vital in those conversations, as has Chris Lahey. We've also worked. And spent quite a bit of time with members of the team from the high school and members of the team from Cedar View. As we've looked to do some renovations and make some improvements in those two buildings. So Chris put together just a quick update for you. So we'll walk through those seven slides. It's still a 10,000 foot flyover view, but we will be able to give you some ideas about timelines. And start to share a little bit of, of a visual concept as to what, what we're looking at, what we're thinking about. As far as some solutions to traffic flow at the middle school. Some mechanical upgrades at Cedar Trails, the office configuration at Cedar View. And then the first phase of work to be done at the high school with that classroom addition. So Chris, you've got your.
Yeah.
Screen shared. So why don't you and Ken start to roll with it on the entry at the middle school?
Absolutely. I wanted to throw in one other thing, just before I forget, disclaimer from GMB, they were hesitant to send me a few of these pictures because. These are works, as you all know, these are, these are a major work in progress and things could, could change significantly before the, you know, the buildings are built and renovated. So. Don't hold their feet to the fire on this. This is just a working project. That's my disclaimer on this. Also, I didn't want to roll it out because I thought it'd be a much, a little bit much with the budget amendment, but beginning in the February meeting. I will start to provide the board with a, a budget snapshot of our bond expenditures each month that will be laid out. I've already created it, but we haven't spent a lot of the funds yet. So. Look forward to that. That'll be coming in February. So anyhow, as Scott mentioned, there's several projects that are getting off the ground. First one being the middle school. Entry and drive rework. And I put the budget number on here. It's just short of $400,000. And where we stand right now at this project is a little bit more than that. So we don't want to go over budget. And so the last place that we. Left this discussion is we may, this may be a place where we want to use. 100 to $200,000 worth of sinking fund dollars to keep our bond expenditures on budget, just an idea. For the middle school drive. So something throughout there. With each one of these projects, you'll see where a timeline is. There's a yellow star where we're going to start bidding and then construction will begin. So for this one, we're looking to bid this in March. Begin construction and paving and, and site work in May, once the ground is nice and warm, and then have this complete before the fall. And I don't know how well you guys can see this, but this is kind of a map of where we're headed. So Ken, I don't know if you want to add anything here with the plan or Scott, or if you want me to talk through that, but.
Well, part, part of our idea here was to take that queue length, which is the length of the people. That we find lining up in vehicles that go down 16 mile road. And get them so we can get them lined up on our drives. And so to do that, we've utilized that length. That runs the front side of the property there back towards that back corner where we did enter. And it, it puts enough in there so that we should be able to get everybody off of the road. And hopefully. We don't back up onto Northland Drive, which is another, you know, worry that we have to think about with shifting traffic. So that basically that's the gist of what we were trying to do. We've put another parking lot to take care of spaces that we'd lose in the front parking lot. The, the original entrance becomes the back entryway for the maintenance staff and food service and everybody else dumpsters who use that. We're looking at joining the parking lots together, the current teacher lot with the new lot that comes in. So we have another means of egress. Out onto Northland Drive. At the same time, we're looking to separate the bus traffic. From that traffic, which is ideal. We never want to try and have bus traffic mixing with regular traffic. So by putting that drive in there, that accomplishes that. So all in all, this is to alleviate that backup we see on 16 mile. And that we have with the parents dropping off. Did I miss anything?
Well, we did talk about maintaining that. The potential entry point from 16, 16 mile into that drop off loop. And so rather than forcing all traffic onto, onto Northland, we did want to provide an access point off 16 mile as well.
That's not shown on that drawing there. So that would be that, the old exit, the one-way exit out that we use currently right now. Which is between Northland Drive and that entrance there, Chris. There's a little drive that comes out. Yes. So that would may be maintained as a road to come in only from 16 mile.
Yep.
So the whole point is to give that campus more entry and exit points to help distribute the flow of traffic throughout. Those high, those high intensity moments of drop off and pickup.
The next one is the Cedar Trails mechanical and, and heating ventilation, air conditioning projects. This has a budget of just over 1.7 million. This is the one that we spoke to you about during the last board meeting. So. We're actually bidding this right now. I have two yellow stars on there, and that's because we're bidding the mechanical actual. Equipment, excuse me, thank you, right now. And then we'll actually bid the work in March for this to be. Completed, or I'm sorry, be the construction beginning in May and then having it completed before the school year starts in August. So. There's probably not a whole lot to say on that one that we didn't speak about before. Next one, very exciting, and this carries a much bigger price tag is our high school addition and remodel. So. Again, this is just a mock-up drawing of the. The expansion of the academic wing. And so the, the most. Up-to-date timeline that we have for this one is to bid it in June. And begin construction in September. And there's a couple of different points of thinking on that. Number one. It's the recommendation of both Triangle Construction and GMB. That this will allow us, by doing this timeline, it'll allow us to stay on budget because. People will be looking for work. Obviously, summer is the primary construction season. And so because this is an, an addition. That, that classes can still be taking place. As well as the cafeteria expansion and then the media center and some other work they're doing there. By doing it kind of during the off-construction season, it'll allow us to stay on budget better and create a better final project. Scott, Ken, anything to add there?
Yeah, there are a couple of other facets to this program that we're looking at. So in addition to the. Classroom additions, we're also looking at rethinking how and where the office is situated. So currently, we're looking at utilizing the space that's dedicated to the media center. In reoccupying that space as that office student services hub. So that's where our counselors will be as well as our. The, the primary function, the office function of the building. Then the current space that is housing our offices, those will become some multipurpose classrooms. And so it will be a total of four classrooms with dividers, movable dividers separating the, the four rooms. So if needed, it could be one larger space and two smaller classroom spaces. Or, you know, one small space and three large spaces or one really big space. For, for a variety of audiences. And so we're excited about the functionality and fluidity of that space. With those partition walls, it will also include the expansion of the cafeteria. In rethinking that space that currently is a media center, you know, the, a library, we want to think 15 to 20 years down the road. And so we want to try to design a space that's as fluid and as flexible as possible, but still. Gives students and teachers access to those critical resources that a library functions as now. And so we'll be rethinking some spaces and creating. Rather than having book stacks, we'll have a book depository, we'll also push. A lot of the books out into classrooms. And so students will have greater hands-on access to them from their classroom experiences. But we think that we'll really be able to leverage and maximize the use of those different spaces. So that we can get a bigger return on the investment over the long haul of that square footage.
Yeah. And I didn't include a floor plan. Maybe that, that would be something we can include next month because. The high school floor plan is, is looking pretty neat. I thought this was a great illustration. This would just be that academic wing from the other side, obviously looking into that why. So.
So to get the 12 classrooms, we'd have eight classrooms, four on the first floor, four on the second floor. In this addition, and then the four additional classrooms in the front of the building that currently has. Currently is being utilized by the office space.
And then lastly, I didn't put a budget on this because it's a very large, there's a lot of different components of it. The Red Hawk and Cedar View remodels. So we've already spent quite a bit of time speaking about Cedar View. And the different ideas that we have here. This is again, a mock-up of what that entrance might look like and putting the office. Right there and redoing that. But this is one that they're. Advocating that we push down the road a little bit and start bidding it next November and start work. In April of 2022 with this one. And obviously, that was the extent of my calendar. So. The construction would be complete before the next school year commenced. For the same reasons, I think with this, right? Scott, Ken?
Yeah, Ken, do you want to talk about timeline and contractors with this thinking a little bit?
Yeah, this thinking, we, when we looked at it, we're trying to figure out. Number one is when would we like construction to happen during the school year, at the beginning of the school year, at the end of the school year, when do we want school to open? Tying that together with the, the proper bidding environment to get our best pricing from contractors. Let us basically to holding off until November to bid this so we can have a great group of bidders. Possibly tied together with some existing work that's happening on the, when they see it that way. So they don't have to pull off and leave, which gives us a better bidding environment. And then that allows us to start this in the spring. To have less disruption to the school, run it right through the summer, then start out the school year of 2022 with a newer office addition onto the building.
Yeah, and that is, that is all we have here. So any other questions? Turning into that.
And again, these are all concepts. So.
Yes.
Still very fluid in our thinking.
Very fluid.
I, I just have one, and that's jumping back to the middle school. I think that 16 mile access is important.
Yeah.
Even sometimes people coming out of town sneak around that way.
Yeah.
I'll, I can name multitudes of people that do that.
Yep.
So thank you for that.
No, thank you.
Regarding, regarding the middle school project there, Ken, you'd mentioned, hopefully, we don't back up on the Northland Drive. So I don't want to get down into the dirt and details, but do, is there a study involved to see how much traffic comes at what time and how many cars and to make sure we don't back up on Northland Drive?
We're, 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 we're watching traffic right now to see just how many people come from what direction. It's the people coming from town going southbound. That, that left-hand turn lane might run into problems. So we've looked at making that. Right-hand turn, you know, there's a bunch of options. We're talking about making the right hand turn off and on shoulder of the road so people pull over, get in. Possibly multiple ways to swing in. So you can swing in from the right and from the left at the same time. Have four different avenues in and out of that driveway, two out and two in. There's, there's a lot of different ways that we're looking at trying to prevent that. But yes, we are going to be studying and seeing exactly who's coming from what direction.
The current queue length that we have is for about 28 cars to sit on school property. And wait within the drop off and pickup process. The, under the new plan, that queue length would expand to over 65 cars. So. We're, we're really multiplying that expanded length. And if we include that drop off, off 16 mile. That will push that number even higher. And so we, we think that we, based on the, you know, a 600 student. Middle school, the, the new concept really addresses the queue length. As we were looking to get it, get it taken care of. So that really shouldn't be a problem, other than what Ken shared. Those individuals traveling southbound on Northland, looking to make that left-hand turn. Looking to make that left hand turn onto campus. But human beings are creative in their ways to find, find paths around obstacles. So my guess is multiple people will rather than turn left onto campus, they'll zip down and turn left onto 16 mile. You know, they'll find ways that work for them.
Also, part of that queue length, when we originally, when I looked at it, I included 16 mile because that's where people are backed up into. So if you use that current, that's the actual queue length. What we're developing right now, just off of Northland is longer than that is. So we'll still hold more cars than what we currently back the roads up with. It's just that, that left hand turn, Jeff, is the one that I just questioned. I said. Yeah, we got to make sure we don't back that up too far.
And then the other question I had was the high school. Renovating the office areas, working through the media center to create classrooms. Is that all in the wording of the original ballot that we had approved?
Yes. Creation of 12 classrooms, creation of that student services hub. And so it's all tied, tied together.
Yeah. And that language is, you know, renovation, it's pretty, they, they make it pretty loose on purpose. So we can. Yeah, but it's all what was on the bond boards and presented to the community.
Can you come, can you explain a little bit further how the media center will be? Used at the library at the, at the high school? I heard you say you'd send books out into classrooms, but beyond that, will there still be a central area? For students to go get books if they want them? I don't, I just, I guess I don't like the idea of getting rid of our library. I, I would much rather hire a librarian, to be honest, and, and have it grow bigger. So I'm concerned about that. Can you explain it a little bit better for me?
Yeah, you bet. We're, we're not going to get rid of content. We're not going to get rid of books. We want to put those books in students' hands more. To make that access to those books easier. Currently, the library is used predominantly for. Our online students who are taking online classes, it's being used for things other than for a library. Just out of necessity. And so what we would, what many districts are doing is going with a book storage area. Where students can request certain books. We retrieve those books and provide those books to students. Make them accessible that way to them, but then also giving them access to their books just from their English class. Or from their social studies class or history class, things like that. And so we're still going to be providing students with access to materials. We'll just be doing it differently so that we can get more use out of that square footage. Compared to how we've done it in the past.
And to that point, there will, there will still be a, a, a space that would be a library or a media center in the past. But it's just a more all encompassing multimedia learning space, right? You know, with fixed seating and comfortable, you know, kind of outside of the box environment to learn in.
Yeah, it'd be designed to, to adequately serve, you know, 75 students plus or minus. In a presentation format or, you know, a large group, you know, really mixing space where you can get a lot of creative, creative thinking. And, and just a different way to use square footage that moves us forward. Rather than having it be a place with, you know, really just designed to house books. So we're just trying to be, trying to think ahead.
So the online classes that are currently in the media center, they'll go to one of the 12 new spaces.
Yeah. So great question. We would really see those new classrooms at the front of the building. Where the current office is. We see those spaces being designed and, and being utilized for our online learners and that type of thing. So, you know, if we've got a large group of 50 students who are involved in, you know, online learning for a given hour. Then, you know, we open up a partition and we have a large, a large group space for those students that way to use. We just see a lot of flexibility, particularly in that location of the building for adult classes in the evening. For, you know, thinking outside the box in terms of how we can use spaces. Beyond the normal school day.
So the other thinking, Chris, when you go to your projection business meeting, are we going to project? Are we thinking we're going to have more online learners within our building? I don't know.
Yeah, it's a fair question. I'm not, we haven't got to that level of the detail in it yet. We'll know a lot more in six months. I think, you know.
Okay.
But it's really going to be interesting, you know, post COVID to see. You know, I, there's a train of thought that thinks maybe this will create a greater appreciation for coming to school and learning in person. So we'll see. We don't really know, but most people are projecting that we'll have the, the highest kindergarten class ever. Or highest kindergarten numbers ever next year, just because parents, kids that were on the fence age wise, they kept them out one more year. And now they'll come next year in addition to all the kids that typically would. So we'll see.
Hey, any other questions? All right. Thank you for that overview. That was good. We take the disclaimer that it's not set in stone. So thank you for that. All right. That brings us to the portion of our meeting for public comments where we would take input or concerns from the public. And Scott, have you received any notice of anyone that has any intent to speak?
I have not. And we only, we have one attendee who's with us in the meeting tonight.
So attendee, if you have, if you want, you can put in the chat box or indicate by a raised hand. If you are here to make a comment. If not, that's fine too.
We are getting some fierce feedback from someone's mic.
It's fine. Okay. So we will take that as we do not have any persons for public comment this evening. And as always, our emails are posted on the website. If anyone did want to reach out to the board that way or through our superintendent, Mr. Scott Smith. So we'll move on with our action items for this evening and they are all, they were all as presented. There was minimal discussions. So I'm going to call for the vote cumulatively with everything all into one. So I would entertain a motion to accept the organization of the Board of Education. Items one through seven as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trent, seconded by Matt and Misty. And to accept the organization of the board as presented, is there any discussion? Having none, we're going to make this very easy. All in favor, say by I am, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. And then there's no one opposed. So the action item is approved unanimously. Thank you. And that moves us on to communication. And for the Board of Education, I just have for us. We got a M A S B update. There's a call in meeting or a Zoom meeting, I believe, tomorrow at lunch for some COVID updates. So if anybody has the time, if they wanted to jump in on that, I didn't have any other notifications.
Heidi, there was, there was one email that came through. It looked like they were looking, M A S B was looking for a representative from our district. To serve on their board. But they needed a application by 13th. Did you see that?
Yes. I think, Scott, did you put that in your Red Hawk?
It's been in the Red Hawk weekly for the last several weeks.
Right.
With a link. So if you're interested.
Yes. If anyone's interested in serving at my M A S B, I have no idea as to the time that it would take to serve on that. On board. It's probably easier now that we're in Zoom rather than the traveling piece. But Jill, who is the tri-county president, she, if anybody were interested in serving in that capacity. I'm sure she'd be more than happy to talk about those time, you know, what that would do too. So. Okay. That's all I have. Is there any other board communication that we would share at this time? Okay. Scott, I will turn it over to you.
So the only communication we have is Jen was going to talk a little bit about the online course provider selection process.
Yep. So just wanted to let you know that as we're looking to fall a bit and starting to evaluate what our needs might be. For fall, we are working with both a team at the elementary, middle and high school levels. All of those in order to hear from a variety of content providers to decide if what we have now is what we would want. Just to be prepared for the future and not make a decision at the last minute. So as an example, we will be working with. Pearson and Michigan Virtual as well as Edgenuity. And we are, there's a committee of teachers and administrators involved in that process in order to consider what we have. And what we might need going forward, should we be offering a continued option for online education in Cedar Springs.
Are we going to get any student or parent input on that?
Yes, we are, Heidi. Thank you for asking that question. Yep. We're starting first with gathering some information from the content providers. And then we will be sending in January this month, we will be sending a survey out to all of our stakeholders. Asking for some input on how things have gone this year. That will become a year after year cycle that we engage in. And use for our continuous improvement process. So parents, students grades for and up. And all employees will be receiving that survey this year. So we'll be able to get some real good feedback. From all of our stakeholders about how they're feeling, about how things are going.
Okay, thank you.
And then beyond that, we will include some targeted folks who have been involved with RHO. Students and families to get some feedback from them about how's it going.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Jen? Okay. That brings us to planning and our next board meeting is scheduled for January 25. And depending on any executive orders that come out or those types of things. We could still be in Zoom. We could be face to face. There, Zoom is easy and it has great clarity. Not that I wouldn't want to see you all face to face. So we'll just keep working through that as best we can. And, and what's going on in the, the state, the city, the country or whatever. So that's the thinking behind that. And that's what I have for planning. Scott, do you have anything else for planning?
I do not.
Okay. With that, at 8:08, we will call the meeting adjourned. And thank you very much for attending. Thank you for your service. And thank you for your support.